Kevin, please.
Dear Lord, we thank you Father for this day. We thank you for the blessing of life you've given us. Thank you for the health, the means, and freedoms that we get to enjoy, we Lord, and we thank you and praise you for that. Lord, we pray that you just help us to be the stewards that you'd have us to be and help us to seek you for leadership and guidance and help us to make decisions that's pleasing unto you and what's beneficial for our town. Lord, now just forgive me where I sin and where I fail in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord.
Praise allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hackleburg Town Council meeting October 28th, 2019. Item number one, call the meeting to order. Need a motion?
So, no.
Don, second. Kevin. All the favor. Item number two, need a motion to cover only what's on the agenda.
Motion.
Kevin.
Share.
Don. All the favor. Item number three, reading of the minutes, 10, 14, 19.
The Hackleburg Town Council met in regular session on October 14th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lawley made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Don Warne led everyone in prayer and the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Coburn stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Ben Mir Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the September 9th, 2019 meeting. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the September 12th, 2019 special meeting. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbut and seconded by Councilmember Don Warne to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, five As, one abstain. A financial statement was presented to the mayor and council for review. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbut and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The clerk presented a check register for the council to look over and to approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to pay all bills we due. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. In old business, the council wanted an update on the fireworks stand. Mayor Coburn stated that he had made contact with the owner and gave him until October 1st to have it removed. If not removed, legal action would be taken. In a new business, Chief Marbut wanted to discuss some police department needs with the mayor and the council. He gave each a packet containing certain needs of the department. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbut and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to purchase a vest for Chief Marbut and the safety equipment that is needed. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. Councilmember Kevin Warne wanted an update on rent from Huddy. The clerk stated that he had paid three payments at $200 each for office September and October. Councilmembers Kevin Warne and Taffy Lawley were concerned that he had only paid three months and should have paid $300 per month from the beginning of the year. Mayor Coburn stated that he would talk to Huddy and ask about the back rent and the power bill as well. He had not been billed for the power bill, but the clerk will get an invoice for him. The mayor and council discussed the date of this year's Christmas parade. All were in agreement that December 9th, 2019 would be the date. This was the date that Steve Bell, who will be Santa, has reserved for the town. The mayor and council discussed what date would be good for a work session on the budget. It was agreed that Thursday, October 17th at 6:30 would be good for all. Mayor Coburn wanted to discuss with the council trading the downtown area, which is State Highway 253 presently, with the state for Old Hackleburg Road between 253 and US 43. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to do this. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The mayor wanted to discuss legal fees from people trust bank with the council. He received a bill from them for the work done for the lawn of the grocery store. The amount of the bill was $9,500. Town attorney Tony Glenn told the mayor and council that he thought the bill was twice as much as it should be and that we should offer them $5,000. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbut and seconded by Councilmember Don Warne to make the offer of $5,000. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with some quotes for new copiers for her office. After looking over the quotes, a motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Marbut to purchase the coffee star made by Kyle Sarah. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The gravel and parade list was discussed. The list includes Tim Cantor, Steve Pickens, Charlotte Dollar, Betty Daniels, and Eugene Marbut. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to gravel and parade said drives. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbut and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to adjourn.
Have you heard the reading of the minutes? Any questions or corrections?
Starting at the bottom, did we get to the copy machine?
He was in town one day to talk to the First Baptist and he came by here and I told him what we wanted and he told me he would give me a call back. And I haven't heard from him, so I'm gonna call him tomorrow. They delivered your coffee.
We got ours on last Queen's Day, I think.
I think they got the same one, working together too, so I might just to see what it's gonna be.
Next one.
What about our offer?
To what?
What about the offer to the bank? I still want your money.
It won't be to the bank, it'll be to the.
To the, to the Justin Williams.
So you hadn't heard anything? Did they just turn us down? Hadn't heard anything?
Hadn't heard anything.
I spoke to Wes on the trade on the road and they didn't want to do that for a while, which may well happen overnight, but we'll get that done.
That's a good move for them to just take that.
What about our old business fireworks stands, anything out of that guy?
Yeah.
Or the man?
Yeah, I've got it.
They're coming a little bit. Other building, it's looking nice over there.
For the media, we did not meet, we did not have a work session and we're gonna reschedule that.
You weren't supposed to tell him. I think we need to a motion and second to void that vote for the police department.
I've got that on here as well.
Always on there.
Anything else? Need a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Don. All the favor. Item number four, paying the bills.
I've got the list of check register that was done from the 14th up until today that I have paid and then what we have on there to pay as of tomorrow.
I believe our fire bills, Iron Man, is gone.
It's nearly out of his line.
Six thousand, that's Iron Man. You already have a man, I mean. What clerk are we talking?
We're gonna press someone that came in here when it leaked. Order number two, the. They, they've been paid.
Yes. Since the last meeting.
That was for them to know it off.
That's a lot more than everybody else.
About a third or four. They were.
And let me tell you, we have enjoyed it. Yes, it does.
All right, need a motion to pay the bills. I might come. Kevin. Derek. All the favor. All right, old business, last meeting. Eugene made the motion on a police department issue. He can't make that motion with Jeremy and his brother. So I guess we need to void that. We need to totally revote on that or?
Yes. Motion void.
Need to revote on.
I need a second. So we, we voided that and now we need a motion to accept the purchase of the needs of.
Since I've avoided that, I'll make a motion to that. Seconded, I'll second that.
All the favor. Y'all understand that, right?
Set first, eh?
Yeah. Yeah, he needs it. It's just Eugene can't make the motion. All right, item number two, the fireworks stand. I did get ahold of him today and told him that we had an agreement for him to be out by October 1st and now he wanted to go. Well, it was October the last time I talked to him, then I was gonna, I told him November. He wanted to stay till December now and I told him, look, it might, would have been different if things had went like we talked about, but they didn't. So he says he will be up here next week to move it. I guess it'll be up to us if we're gonna come back with it or not. We probably need to do a contract with him where he's got to sign something saying, hey, I'm gonna come in if he comes back in.
It needs to be moved. If he's gonna put it up here right after the holiday.
Instead of staying up here for only a year. I don't think I voted for him to have. Because he's told us too many different things.
Was each time?
Uncertain. So that cuts it off plus. It could look more presentable.
Could.
I mean, my gosh. Come on now.
Really gonna be able to get that new bill?
He's fixing his stuff like he's supposed to and it's gonna look nice.
He can bring us to the upgrade.
I think devil does.
So we'll, once he gets it out, we'll look at it. Come back to it. Anyway, he said he would be moving it out next week. All right, new business, item number one. We need to set a date for a budget meeting and be ready to pass the budget. I think I'm available on that anytime.
I will be too.
It ain't on Monday or Tuesday, I am too.
What's that about today? Oh, you have work.
Slave, I'm talking work like church.
I'm really.
He was at church.
I apologize, I was the cause of the last one because I had an abscess on my tooth.
Do it Thursday or Tuesday?
Yeah, unless they change it.
I think they'll change it. Think it'll be Friday night?
Yeah, that will be too.
They'll be talking about it.
Can you do it Tuesday?
No.
Are you too tired to think?
I could've. I, I don't think that they can anymore.
All right, y'all wanna see November 4th?
Only family, there.
6:30?
Yep. Item number two. A resident has requested a street light on the corner of Jackson Military Road and Highway 172. Supposedly there's a lot of activity after dark down that way.
He was telling me that there's a lot of parked vehicles and he didn't know exactly what was going on, but he didn't think it was something that was very good.
Where's that at?
Jackson Military, maybe the road right before.
That's right there.
I know Chris Maitre's checking it.
Basil's right there. The road, Basil's right there. I think we need to get the police to look at it. Considering how he's got lights around the table. I'm sure he's got a big street light up there in front of it, to be honest.
What would people be gathered up right there for me? I ain't got any business.
Yeah, but that's way out of town. I can't do it. Trying to make this put up another street.
They are, I wrote down there, there is a kind of a hump right there in the highway too where you turn. So it wouldn't be a bad location for a light, but um so, yeah.
My problem is six thousand something dollars already.
What, what's the street light cost? Then about $16.
Maybe thirty.
When you put it on here to park, that's what they follow us.
And then big ones are.
Yeah. They may be around thirty. They went up.
He didn't pay $3, but that's a while back.
I think it's around thirty.
Yeah, I think it was about thirty dollars.
And a lot of it depends on how long the arm is too. And the wattage that you choose.
Yeah.
Then we have a time that the police could show up down there and kind of look at it and see what's going on.
Should be able to show up anytime.
I know, but we don't want them to be there when we.
Oh, well, at a certain time, leave people congregate at that location? I don't know.
Here we go, Jeremy, get the look to the right, brilliant.
Across the hall right there.
Across the field.
Right out there.
I'm surprised them, Basil don't come after.
I am too. I talked to him, David, he didn't mention that, but I'm surprised he don't get after.
Cause he owns that field, doesn't he?
Well, he may not know. Because that's up from his house, he can't see it.
He ain't near those, Don, he can't get around.
That's right.
Basil's about ninety-two years old.
Let's, let's.
Let's police a little bit.
What about asking?
Let's look at this at the next meeting. Darren affects when they're live.
Yeah, he might go through there a time too and that just change their location.
A possible kid. We'll table that, Carl, until the next meeting. Item number three, Greg Gunion's gonna update the mayor and council on the water board.
Man Daryl, I guess some of y'all know that the new water tank still is not in operation. We've had some problems since about July with the treatment plant and what they determined is they, when they done the initial test on it, they never did. When they changed the discharge point of the, of the water, they never did resize or re, I don't think of the re, I guess resize the pumps, the fluid pumps that pump the water out of it. Anyway, we had one of them go out and just one of them would not move it, so. Long story short, is we've got a temporary pump in there that's working. But since then, me and Daryl's met with Burt Hankins, the representative of us was Paul Burt Carter, now it's Caleb Dean. And we're gonna do a, they're gonna tap the main tomorrow and do a test and a drawdown test. And when they find out exactly what size pump we need in there, then Burt Hankins now will be responsible for supplying two new pumps, which is gonna be somewhere right $18,000. It won't cost us or the town. In the meantime, after that's done, then they're gonna get back on the water tank and then, you know, we're gonna give him the option of of getting it going or we'll do what we gotta do.
Those are the people that put all this down.
Right.
So they should have put it in correctly to begin with, is what you're saying?
Right. And our water loss, when, when, me and Jamie, Jamie can verify, when we took over on the board, it was about forty-five, forty-eight percent water loss and the last two or three months, it's been running twenty-one to twenty-seven percent. We've changed out about a hundred meters. And each meter we've changed, we care to have it tested, we're losing about twenty percent of the meters. So it's just, we're just buying a few along as we can to try to, try to, you know, help with the water loss. But I just wanted to keep y'all informed since we are appointed by y'all what's going on because people's gonna come to y'all with questions.
So how many more other ones left?
We have, we have about eight hundred and twenty residential meters. And, you know, we've just been doing, some, some months we'll do ten, some months we'll do five, just depending on what we can afford.
According to Burt Hankins, they are gonna make sure everything is working and online before they stop. You know, we've got a 300,000 gallon tank over there that we have not been able to use.
Since 2004, people have approached.
You know, I don't know how this engineer, don't matter, but it just needs to work.
As long as they'll fix it, then they'll cast that mess.
Yeah, that's what we were telling.
That's what, that's what me and Daryl both had a, we made them understand that neither one of us is gonna be having more money.
They're gonna stay in that business, eh? Do it, do it right. Fix it.
But the, the new contact for us, his name's Caleb Dean and I don't know if Daryl's got his number, but I'll get it to him tomorrow. He's gonna be up here tomorrow when we do the, the, the test on that treatment plant. If any of y'all are around, wanna be over us, we're gonna be there at nine o'clock in the morning.
Anything else going on?
That's, that's about it right now.
Jamie, you got anything?
Appreciate him doing that, though. That's good to come and let us know and.
And if y'all, y'all have any feedback, that's what, you know, we gotta work hand in hand again. If y'all are hearing things out there that we need to know about, you know, somebody let us know and we'll try to address these issues.
It'd be good if y'all could, somebody could come once I'm all in there.
Well, I hope Carter, Dave, at least once a quarter, put me on where I can keep y'all informed of what's going on.
That's good.
They applied for a grant last year to replace all the bad meters and they turned down for it. Maybe we can try again some point. But anybody that gets a new meter or something happens to the meters, they'll have to change them. So it's slow to shore they had. All right, proceed.
Can I go back to my old meter?
No.
I've had it for a long time.
I can't make up my mind if I need one or not.
You'll be like me, you won't let it all look back.
All right, item number four, everybody should have a lease agreement in their folder from when we made the agreement with Huddy on the radio station. Y'all take a minute to look over that.
You mind if I talk while they're doing that? Because I thought the one that was given, that's the one we set up, I didn't know it was that way.
If you got one of these, say.
I've got one. You showed me one, I've got it.
If I'm not mistaken, Tony, is this not the last one that we, in that final draft?
I think so.
But I think there's no doubt about it.
Can I help?
But let me get through this part, Huddy, then we'll let you talk. Part of this on here was figuring the average bill at 532 a month and then paying anything over that. Which is pretty hard to do, pretty hard to figure a power bill and then, you know, is it 130, is it 340, is it? Who knows what it is?
Plus you got people that comes in there just like we did for the last three weeks and that power bill's gonna skyrocket, that ain't his problem.
You have the holiday markets, we have Halloween things that go on, we have basket. You have the holiday markets, we have Halloween things that go on, we have basket ball. Then we opened it in the summer for uh, the public to use, so it's really kind of hard to go off of that. Um, I would like to see us amend that part of the agreement to a flat rate of two hundred a month for power. And that would simplify it, he would know what he had to pay, and we would know what we were getting paid on power bills.
All right, I understand all that, now. Do we know what it's been averaging? We're into October. What is the average from January up till the end of September?
I did that average for you, I didn't.
We need that, I'd like to have that, I mean, I mean, I think that's a good question, and then.
I'm trying, I just.
And then we can look at the year prior to that. And now that holiday market deal, was it in there in September?
You know, the holiday market was in December.
I mean, the, uh, thing would just have.
Two of them, yeah.
Yeah, there was a, one in the spring and one in the fall.
Did we do that last year?
We did, we did too.
We done one of them.
We did one in the spring.
No, I thought we done the holiday.
The holiday market was in December, but the consignment was in May and October.
We, we could get them numbers, just line up what it was last year, what it is up through October this year, and get a good idea of if it's a thousand dollars, or if it's eight hundred dollars, or four hundred dollars, or what it is, cause I don't know. But we, I know we looked, I remember looking at that five thirty-two, we felt like that's what it had been averaging. Come up with that, yeah, we come up with that figure somehow, so let's go back to the basics and look at that, see, have we come up with that? Why we come up with it, and if it's fair? Then come back to it.
I don't think.
That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I think that's a lot.
That's just me.
I, I know, whatever we have to do, I wanna do that, cause I wanna be able to, you'll give them a bill each month instead of him having one year. For us to pay a hill to be getting a bill to get paid.
I'm good, I'm good with that, just so long as we know it's a good solid number, everybody feels good about that, I thought that.
I wouldn't pay it if I didn't get a bill.
Well, if you have a flat rate, and you know what it's gonna be, like the rent.
But we could still give them a bill for the flat rate.
Oh yeah, you need to.
I don't know if there's actually any way we could truly figure out. Not with events coming and going, different things, I mean, power bills coming and going. Like you said, the best thing to do is some kind of agreement that we feel is fair, that everybody feels is fair, and then try to work on that, cause I mean, about twenty-four.
That's what I was saying, I was kind of like, I'd rather do something like that, you know, but we can look at the figures and see what it's actually costing us, and that's all Kevin's role.
Darrell, is there two sub panels in that gym, three sub panels on? One, one upstairs runs everything down in the gym.
There's one, there's one in the hallway, uh, in the office part, but the one in the gym runs, the gym, the one upstairs runs. Some of the units in the one hallway maintains everything in the office part.
So. I guess what I'm trying to say, would it be beneficial to the town to look, have a nutrition company, just see what it would cost to have him a meter set on that sub panel that's in the office in there, which would be mostly what he's gonna run in the first place?
If it runs into our office.
I tried to tell you what I got and what I had now.
Well, but I mean, that, that would, that would, that would take care of that, if he could save his own meter.
Turn the light around here, I'll tell them.
It wouldn't cost the town anything for somebody to have it located. That would do it, that, that. Didn't get around the issue of anybody else renting it later, then they can, they can carry on some time. It, it wouldn't cost, as far as power company hooking it up, it wouldn't cost anything for that, it'd just be somebody to separate the lines going from the gym to in there. But if that panel runs all that office and stuff, it wouldn't be that big of a deal.
Yeah, we can look at it.
All right.
If that way he does pay for it, he's, there'd be no questions there. And after that, whoever, if somebody else rented it, cause we'll be doing that.
I don't know how you could do that.
You wouldn't do that.
We'll do it, you got a set for like your wiring and everything.
I found it fine.
All right, go ahead.
First of all, I wouldn't be up here at all, but I've been reading the paper, I've been reading on the internet, what I'm not doing, what I am doing. First of all, everything's up there, go right around now, there's a one fifty watt bulb. By nine o'clock, there's nobody there. I mean, I don't watch already, it's can't, all right, let's go back, I hear you talk about the owner, these things here, and I hear Tammy. You hadn't been up there, I've been there nine months, you hadn't been up there, she hadn't even, how the hell y'all tell me what's going on if y'all can't come up here and say what's going on? I cleaned it, I, I, I cleaned it, the place has been cleaned up, the, the floor was pitiful, floor was about like every right now, I paid for it. Did I do it? I, I've got it rewired, and he's been untied up, can't finish it, I'm trying to put a TV station. And I'm not trying to drag nobody around, I don't come to your council meeting, but I don't wanna, I, I read the paper, I read over here. I, I don't pay my bills, I don't do this, I don't do that. I've been doing y'all's football game twelve years. Twelve years, y'all ain't give us a damn. Now I know what, I've been ready, and I, and, and we go all everywhere, they're like we supposed to go up to Chattanooga almost. I don't know what y'all's problem, if you, if you can't tell me what's wrong, if you can't get in your car and drive half a mile. And that goes for Tammy, now, when I, I go out here every morning, and I turn them lights off, in that gym nature. The bathroom is, is a shame how it's cleaned up. You go in my place and the damn thing, excuse me, the thing's clean, I say damn, I was, you gotta give me. But I'm just saying, it's clean, I try to take care of it. And all I read about is the paper and everywhere else, how sorry we are. I paid my bills, and you wonder why, I'm trying to make it, y'all heard my bills, telling how sorry I am, how we not, not sorry, but how we not paying our bills, not doing this, that, and the other. And y'all can't even get up, y'all butts go up there and check it. And that, and, 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 matter of fact, where you work at, you work down at Gooey.
Sure do.
I could be at Gooey right now, you know that? Go talk to you, I mean, I, I know you don't care.
Look, Huddy, only thing I, I've said is if you owe rent, you need to pay it.
Well, first of all, first, I agree, but I've built a place, I ain't had, but I ain't had a, what am I, this ain't worked. Hardly, I mean, I mean, hell, he fixed it, it's hard to take, nothing, got one, been tore up the whole time, am I right?
Yeah, we, we voted with his long request.
Well, I mean, I know, but this is nine months. I mean, I mean, I've had the same problem, I mean, I have to do, I mean, I have to do everything. I, I pay people to clean the floor, I pay people to paint it, I've had to put seats, and it, and it, and it's raining it right now, raining that much. Sorry. Y'all didn't care about it, y'all let it sit there and go to, and I'm taking on everybody now, but y'all let it go to pot. You go up there right now, we go up there and look, let break in the newspaper and radio station. But all I hear is, 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 Tam, about me, you know, you're out six thousand dollars on this, you're out eight thousand dollars on this, and you're worth about two or three hundred dollars. I mean.
Yeah, I, I expect a man to do what.
I do what I supposed to do, why don't y'all do what y'all supposed to do?
That's what I expect.
And I'll tell you something else, Ken folks, or nobody else gonna tell me how to run that place. I mean, I've got people telling me, don't have this one on there, don't have that one on, I got open door policies, like that back there, people walk in, I don't care who they are. You? I don't care who they are. I don't care, cause they've got something to say, and my job's to say it. And I've done twelve, twelve, and, I mean, if you wanna talk to somebody, why don't you call me down here in the little private room, and, and eat my butt out? Or, or, I, I read the paper, I read, and, and, and on the, his, his thing. You think customers won't deal with me and they pay us bills? Well, no, you know better than that. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, y'all might not like me, I don't care, I'm trying to do right. And I go in every morning, I don't get a salary, I put everything back in the company, I try to make this company, I try to put a TV station. I can't get my wires fixed, I can't get nothing fixed. Nobody has me, I mean, my commo's have been stopped up. Mayor called vice president Punderson, I don't know what else he does. I gotta string the water back.
I'll help to go for it.
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to, I think y'all done good job, I got, I'm just saying, that's what I have. We let it go down, and I know you don't like me, and I don't really care, but that's the way it is.
I like you, they got nothing that they were lacking.
Well, why y'all talking about me for?
I ain't talked about you, the only thing I said is you owe rent, and you need to pay it.
Well, why don't y'all fix it, dig something up?
Well, talk to the mayor.
Why should I talk to the mayor, you, you, y'all, you attend me to talk about how sorry I am?
I ain't said nothing about how sorry you were.
Well, yeah, you have.
I ain't.
Well, it's in the paper.
Well, no guys ain't wrote that stuff, cause it ain't in there.
Well, I'm just telling you, I don't, I'm trying to do Hackenberg right, I've been doing y'all's ballgame, which is not yours now, you didn't play Hackenberg twelve years.
I know that.
Twelve years. Up and down when we played, I try to take care of it, I try to put it on the radio, you ain't got nothing here to advertise Hackenberg like I do. I've got other towns that want me, I can move, only reason I moved, I mean, I'll be honest with you, Coach and them people, and, and been treating me all right. I, I mean, they don't give me no money, they ain't got no money to give. I don't even ask the town for no money. Other thing I have to make, and the only way I can make it, is when you and, and two or three city councils wanna criticize me on the, on the, and paper. And they go back to their own papers and find out if I ain't telling the truth.
Oh, I brought up the rent.
I mean, if you brought up anybody owing six thousand or three thousand dollars, I ain't heard nothing. You're, I mean, I ain't heard nobody, besides me. And I'm sorry, I do think, and I'll say this for the record, the mayor and two or three city councils done me right. They ain't give me no money, they ain't give me no nothing, but they haven't harassed me, I ain't got kicked in them ribs. That is a shame, when we got video here, and y'all kicking me in the ribs all the time, and you know it.
I don't disagree with that.
What, read your own papers, read, read forty-nine or forty-eight or what, this, that, no, no. But anyway, I'm not trying to hard time, I'm just getting tired of getting hard time. They tell me not to put this one on the radio, Kenny, or this one on the radio, ain't nobody gonna tell me who I can't put, you better get rid of me now. I've got an open door policy, anybody can walk into my place, sit down and talk, they've twelve, you ain't even been in my place. How do you know what I got up there? I mean, Chris, how do you know, don't you think a city councilman, you wanna be up there talking, and she should too? You go up there and throw stuff all over the, and leave the lights on?
That, that has nothing to do with rent.
I got no problem, why don't you help plan, and doctor, listen, it's your building, why don't you fix it up? I fixed it up. I'm sorry, I apologize, anything that you wanna talk about?
I don't do it.
But I'm just, I'm, I'm telling the truth, I can get back any morning, I'm not mad at you. But I, 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 but I'm just telling you the fact, how would you like to be in the paper? And over there, every, every time I turn around, I don't do this, I don't do, you go over there and look, go, and ain't but I have, and ain't, you can walk over there, and look at it. And y'all telling me how sorry I am, I'll see y'all later. And if, if it, and if you don't like it, we'll move, I, I'm just fed up on it. I don't ask you for no money, I don't ask you for nothing. I get up every morning, five o'clock, get out here at six, be on the radio, hit radio twenty-four, and it's four, the power bill. And we leave there, it's a fifty watt bulb on, for about nine o'clock on, it's everything's on junk. That one's about a thousand dollars a month, I take it. Right here, one bulb, and why are you there so high? You've got every Dick Tom and Harry everywhere, at least every light on, you go over there right now, a few minutes, go to the bathroom, and look how they do your own building. And I'm sorry if I may be mad, but, you know, I've been and I'm not either, I'll see y'all.
You get a copy of this contract? Is that the last?
That's, I'm sure it is, when you say it. I'm sure that is.
Just that I didn't have the averages today, because that was added later.
Has he got his rent paid up? Is his rent paid up? This is yes or no, that's a simple answer.
He had a different contract than what the final draft was on, having.
From three hundred dollars a month business.
The first one was two hundred.
Yeah, the first one was two hundred.
Has he even paid two hundred dollars a month?
Yeah, he's paid, I don't know.
Has he got it all, how many?
Three months.
Three, out of, just started in January?
Yeah, for sure, I thought, yeah.
That, that was the first one that we talked about. No question, that's the last.
The three hundred is, is the last one, cause I wasn't knowing very close to two hundred or two feet.
Yeah, that's, that right here.
So, no, we had to pay his rent, so he needs to pay his rent. It's just. Part of life.
Do you know what month he started paying?
Um, I have had three months, and uh, it was in the minutes. August, September, and October.
Still think Darrell's got the best idea on the whole thing, we're, if, if five hundred dollars would cover us for that building, building each month for five hundred dollars and.
Yeah, I'm good with getting a set rate, I'd just like to see the hundred dollars. I mean, that simplifies it, and right there's a better idea, yeah, if you had it towards you could figure out, it won't cut what costs that dollar.
If I can say, I'm gonna go, it's none of my races, but if it was me up there, I'd make a suggestion to wipe it clear, start it over. There are enough folks that probably do it tonight, man has done something for the town for a long time, every life, but uh. Wipe it over, start, if it's three hundred dollars a month, billing from that, send them power, uh, payment.
But the thing about that is you have the, you also have the um, American Legion in there.
He, he's gonna be, he's gonna have to.
See, that's the thing about it, so it's, it still wouldn't be fair to, Huddy, if you have a meter set and they're coming in and going.
And you have to jam with that on every night.
Yeah, every night, and he's right, by the way, that gym looks like crap, I'm just being honest.
Truly, I would say, like you said, Greg, I don't know how you can measure the power without having, what, you know he's using exactly on one service. But what you can look at, to me, is from the town, is what we ought to be looking at also, is from, not down to every single penny, but maybe, what is the benefit of this radio station? I mean, is it bringing, we think about revenue, we think about money, we think about advertising, and we see that this radio station, I feel like, to me, is an asset for our town. I mean, I agree with Kevin, I like the contract, whatever a contract it is, you know, we look down and we see how much it is, but also, I didn't, at, at the last council meeting, we talked about this, I did go up there, I looked at the building, I wanted to see what work had been done to it, I know what condition it was in before you went in there. And besides general maintenance, there's something that we agreed on for him to do, I seen that the building had been, you know, worked on, had been, a lot, a lot of improvement on the building. But how much is this actually, that we're not really looking at or thinking about, is actually helping our town? And I understand the contract is, you know, but if there's such things as incline work and other things that we do for other businesses, then if this, if this specific business is helping us in a lot of different ways, and I, I actually see that it has, in a lot of different ways to our community, we got to agree on some kind of maybe, cause there's no specific way to actually know exactly what he's using in power. But it's for us as councilmen, mayor, to sit down and figure out, well, how much, you know, is this rewarding for our town? Is it, is it setting us back to where we can afford to even, you know, are we, are we too cheap on this, too cheap on that? Or are we actually maybe getting by really cheap, when we look at other, the, the other things that y'all, for twelve years of ballgames, of, you know, kids.
My mom, they can't do that.
No, well, I, I mean, I understand.
Can't do what?
You can't just say, well, he's been fitting us so much, so we not gonna pay.
No, I, I agree with that.
We gonna have to go with this contract, and Jamie's idea would be good, if we could all reach an agreement and start over and build him so much, whatever we think it is per month, and go.
And Jamie's idea would be that if we could all reach an agreement and start over and build him so much, whatever we think it is per month and go.
That's what I say from, he really probably didn't get moved in till February or March, I don't guess. I would suggest we, we include that as in kind work on the money he spent on the building, cause it, it was in bad shape, it really was. If we hadn't have put anybody in there, I mean, the building was just going, it was going down every day. It was getting worse.
The mold was what it looked like when he signed the contract, and we all did. And if he didn't wanna be in there, if he, he owes the rent, he should pay it. I wouldn't, this wouldn't, we wouldn't even been having this conversation, he's paid his rent. We wouldn't even be in here talking about it. Maybe we're announcing on that radio and and then he should bring them bills over here, show where he's done this, show where he's done that, he might take it off that rent. But till all that happens, shoot, no. He owes it, he owes it.
He addressed about the heat and American issue. And I know that was in the minutes that we were supposed to address that and change and fix it, which we didn't, I know. And I looked at the, when I went up there. But I hadn't, you know, I guess, he hadn't needed it or for some reason that, you know, it's not been brought to our attention anymore than when it was when it was first brought up, when he occupied this spot, that it needed to be changed out. But it is definitely messed up and, but, you know, maybe, I hope that don't cost a lot to change that, but I know we agreed to do that. So, it's back and forth, I understand, it's, it's both ways. And we do, gotta do what you said, Don, is be legal about it. But we also got, you know, I feel like there's no specific number, but you can just know exactly what it's gonna cost up there either, unless you have your own service pole and be able to read it that way, so. It ain't against the law for us to look and put together as a councilor and mayor, a figures in our mind of what the beneficial part is helping for the town, is it?
You can do that.
We, we can set the rent at anything reasonable. Which we decided to set it at three hundred. The power bill, I think, is gonna always be a headache if we do not set a set rate. Most of his power is gonna, it's gonna cost him at the Hodges Tower, cause that's where all the equipment's running at.
And if we're losing money, if worse comes to worse, we'll be charging everybody that's using that for, at least for the power bill. Even if they practicing ball or whatever they do.
There's another organization in there that would, that's using some of the same, just in the same office block, right? But same power bill that.
The bathroom lights can be put on a motion sensor for about twenty dollars.
See, that needs, probably needs to happen because he's right. Everybody that uses that leaves a bathroom light on, hoodie goes through and cuts everything off.
It's just simple, change out the switching, I think.
You know, nobody probably means to, they just don't think about it. They walk out and leave them on and.
But I, I wouldn't say where he would use a lot of power over there, just the offices. And I think honey would, would settle down in some of them a little bit if you could come to an agreement and maybe just start new and give him a set price on some stuff and, and be done with it. And I think most people in town would be behind it.
Well, it's absolutely an asset to have him here. I don't know, I don't know how you can put a figure on that kind of publicity that you get for a town. Especially one of our size to have a radio station and you know, the, the folks come up to be on the station like he does. You know, you're bringing people into town, which every town tries to do. I'm not opposed to his first three months, four months is right, that is in kind work and trying to set up a fee and get it started on a normal, regular payment scale.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, I, I, it's hard, I guess it's hard to go back and see what he's done to the place, to what, what the rent would be and all that, I don't know how you'd figure all that out. I do know, like I said, if it was nobody was occupying that building right now, I don't even think, or that office space, it's all that's been worked on, I don't even know what good it would be. It would take a lot of money to go in there and get it even workable. Because the molding was popping off the walls from the heat, the blinds was melting. I mean, it was so hot in there, of course, we couldn't, you know, cool it. It'd be so, you know, it'd cost the town so much, so, I mean, I don't know anything else we could have put in that spot that is still that beneficial to our town. I mean, in the last two weeks, I know from everything, from ballgames to church events, has been on that radio. And that's something we do, let the town citizens, that's one service we do, offer them, I mean, that's something we've tried to help for our community, the kids at school, things like that. I just don't see where it's hurting us that bad, except for, like I said, are we paying somebody's power bill? What's the difference on that is? As far as the building goes, it's actually improved. The building's actually improved. Ceiling tiles had been changed out. I know in there before, they was so wet and, you know, so bad looking, they were falling in. Nose has been changed, it just looks a lot better.
He's saying that's done again. He's saying it's bad.
Well, that, that building over there from years ago, I remember it would give us trouble. I don't know how many peoples went up there and looked at it, put seater on that roof and tried to find those screws that was backing out and, you know.
Now, Chris gave us a price for air conditioner, didn't he?
He did, I can't recall right off what it was, but. Maybe verbal price, say it again.
Like it was fourteen hundred. That slides in.
We're benefiting, I guess, some ways when HR department for certain businesses go in there and talk advertising for employees and people in the community hear it and they hired, you know, they went that day, and I know of several, probably over twenty-five people that was hired just because of that, what was going on the radio that morning, advertising that they needed workers. And by that word, the radio, we had people here in town that went to work. So, there's occupational attacks that came from that, there's, you know, it was beneficial there, I know for sure, I don't know. It could maybe been put on some kind of sign on the side of the road, same way, I, I don't know, I just know that that was very beneficial, that I heard that day and seen the results of it.
There, there's no doubt the benefits to the town that radio station brings, especially when you have live talk on in the mornings and you can bring guests on and, you know, community events or job openings or whatever it is you're looking at. You know, I, to me.
The only way you can fill out, figure out that power bill is one of two things. It's like Kevin said, you gonna have to figure out what y'all spent this year, what you spent last year, come up with how much being used, and, and, and the only true way to do it is have that power run that box in there, and you still gonna have to figure out what the American Legion is using. So, the only simple solution to it is like Kevin said. And then after that, you got two units up front that's running. There's one, a unit running that comfort room, and there's a unit running in my office. So, the only simple way you know about a kind of a figure is what you used last year versus what you've used this year by hand. And that's gonna give you how much, I mean, that's the only way you gonna bet with this.
Well, in a, kinda, but we've, we've had a lot more usage in the gym, I think, than we did the previous year also. Specifically basketball season.
Well, you could, you could exclude, just use the months that, that nobody was in the gym.
Well, some say that they weren't.
Well, you could take four months this year and four months last year, those same months, and what the power bill run? So, this is how much more power he's using than he did last year.
Now, we go in the spring, summer, I mean, softball, baseball, they wanna go in there on rainy days, so they're in there. And we have it open to the public in the summer, with the basketball.
You, uh, you've been in there a lot, how much power does he run? Could you not get Alabama Power, somebody just come out and say, look, this is what this man's running right here? Why do you think, on average, this would cost him? Cause since you lots in the air conditioner stuff, wouldn't run that much. The biggest power source out there is gonna be the gym and stuff. I'm sure somebody down there is smart enough to figure out one or two light bulbs and plugs and stuff and run it.
They not near as smart as I am.
Give us.
I, I, I knew it, we'd like to see a few figures and then us just get together and set a set price. Like I said, and bill him for three hundred plus, what little, we have to have on the power. Not what we, what we have to have. Cause he is, even the Nashville people, the St. James people told me that how does a small town like that get a radio station like that? He is very important to Hackenberg, but we still gotta cover ourselves with the expense. And we gotta keep him looking.
I, I mean, have y'all heard of anyone that, that, that his father, him occupying that office? And using it for a radio station? Has there been anything that it's, that y'all heard of this?
I don't know much, sir.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's been started or heard anything? I know the basketball was gonna be an issue, you know, you know, I've checked on it, but now I know that they're playing their games on Saturdays over to the school. So, that's not, you know, that's not nothing overlapping it, so there's not anything that I see that that it's hurt. Cause I mean, that's what we have to do is evaluate what's the best for the community. If it's, if it's running the basket, you know, it was messing up the basketball kids from playing, then that would be, yes, that'd be something that we'd have to look at. But I don't know of anything that it's been, that it has interfered with. And like you said, if you just, if there's some ways, start this. What I mean, you're done with the whole word, and we agree on the power. From what's been, obviously, we don't know how to. And then come up with an agreement.
He's felt, he's felt pretty good once. And our lease agreement is after he moves in, uh, it was our place to fix it up.
And him maintaining, him maintaining the.
Basically, he had to maintain it.
That's what it says, he maintained it.
So, can we do that, just make a motion? To, do we, you know, come back and figure out a number we can agree on? Or get a specific number on the power bill? This other stuff, just wipe it free like used times? I say, I'm, can I make a motion that we can do that?
That we can look at, we need to look at the figures on it for a week.
Nobody can make a motion on anything.
You can, you gonna look at like four months and four, four months, and see last year, this year, and see what we got versus.
We can make a motion on the rent, but we wanna look at the power and.
When we made that Thursday, is it Thursday, when we have a special meeting, we can't. Unless we put it on. On the, yeah, November the fourth, but we could, we could make a decision then.
Unless we have a regular session, we can't load on it then.
That's right.
We can discuss that.
You could, you could, only if you put it down on your, the gym.
Yeah, you'll have to.
I got to take care of the rent part, but it's up to y'all.
I'm saying, just to call it, from the work, we don't know exactly what all this costs for him to do, to get it up to that power. But we do know going forward, what they agree, you know, what, it's fixed up to what now besides this heater, air conditioner thing? I don't know, I don't know. But, you know, he's not pushed it, that's what I was saying, I guess we know it needed to be done since the beginning and he's not brought it to none of us then. So, that's what I was talking about, I was trying to clear it up, like I was talking about, and go from this point on on the.
Well, I guess.
Get that part cleared out.
I guess if it's, if the truth was known, we had the figures of money he spent, we'd beat him. Cause he probably spent ten thousand dollars on that place.
Throw one into it.
That's what I'm saying, we could just not call that, make a motion, cut that part even.
Don't you guess, Greg?
Probably yes. When you can't figure the wiring, you can only figure, you need to figure what actual maintenance of the building, now the wiring was gonna be separate, because that's something that he had to be done.
He had.
On his radio.
Yeah, but, but all of the cleaning of the floors and everything else is, should have been ours.
And then floors was terrible, it's the worst I've ever seen.
Yeah, man, you helped with that. For two weeks.
The only way you gonna figure out that power bill is you just gonna have to get picked four months this year, where you know there wasn't nobody in there in four months from last year. And say, this is how much the difference is, that's the only way you gonna be there. And then just setting a price.
Yeah.
Tony, it's legal to count that as in kind of work in lieu of rent. I got to take care of the rent issue tonight, or, but that's just me.
I'll make a motion to just call that part even.
What month did he pay the two hundred?
On September and October.
So, how, how much total is he paying, total?
That's six hundred.
Six hundred. Alright, so he's, he's signed that lease on December thirty-first, the last year. So, it actually owed from January through October. So, that's that ten months, three thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, if we, if he brings out what he spent on it, he's probably gonna have ten times tied up in it.
Well, my, my thought process is he signed it, he knew it, we knew it.
I'd like to start with the month that said, that the three months that he paid and let him pay another hundred on each month of that and go from that with the three hundred a month.
Is that what the motion, what was you starting?
I was just gonna say, like, we was talking about if you used it for incline work or whatnot, just wipe the slate clean, or we don't, we're not saying that we owe him or he owes us, like, the work he's had done on that there, just call this, up to this point even, and then go from this point on, sit down, make an agreement on the power. I don't think there's no way that you're gonna do it without running some kind of new service pole and figuring out his own part on that. But we know what we're asking about what's in the past and we know what he's done. So, make a motion on calling that part even. If it's incline or, or whatever you, whatever you wanna word it.
You gotta have a starting point though. You gotta have a starting point, you can't just say, we're just gonna knock it off even. You gotta have, he needs already paid three months, two hundred dollars a month, and the contract says three months.
Well, he'll have to pay.
January to August, or January to, uh.
September.
Well, January to July would be the months that he hasn't. You can start.
Start the first month he paid on. Knock the, knock it off back behind there. But he still needs to pay a hundred dollars each month, cause he just paid two hundred.
What you're saying, that would be a motion to catch it up.
From here, yeah.
And just pay three hundred dollars from August to October. And you're saying from January through July, in lieu of rent, the money he put in there, you say is in kind of.
Can he bring in bills up here and let us see what he spent? That'd be asking too much, you think?
I imagine if he could.
Sure hate to ask too much, Chair, I see.
In the labor heaven. In the labor and everything.
Okay, is that your motion? Y'all just gonna have to, to tell me, so I know what to do.
I just said.
A motion to use, um, January to July rent for incline work. And start in November him paying the three hundred dollars a month, plus another hundred dollars each for August, September, and October. Is that correct, what you're saying?
Alright, Aaron made a motion. I can second. Can I second?
Do what?
Can I second?
Yeah.
I second. All in favor?
I'm gonna have to vote for that.
One minute.
Motion on the rent passes three to one. And we'll figure out the power, and we'll get it next meeting. Alright, no grave, no gravel, made a motion to adjourn.
I'm pretty good.
I asked Manny before she left, and she didn't have anything.
Motion to adjourn. I have my question. Can you second? Aaron, I'm ready. Hi, everybody.